Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary where the whole household of God is both welcomed and wanted. You're in the right place at the right time tonight studying the right thing and also happy, I would say Election Day, but second day of election. This is so wonderful that you're tuning in with us tonight because there's always a lot of uneasiness around elections, especially this one. This one seems to have a lot of historical impact. And so when I was going through the teachings today, I thought, man, this is so timely that we are going over this teaching tonight. And so hopefully, this is about an hour of you being able to turn away from CNN or whatever news affiliate that you're watching and connect with your mind, connect with your soul, connect with your spirit. And then as soon as it's over, you can go back and check those election results again. And so I just have to say to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary, to our membership, Sunday was our first Sunday in six, over six months of having in-person, a small group, A through D, I think Sunday was, of having some people in live service. And when I asked everyone to raise their hand if they had already voted, I am telling you, I don't think one person. I think we had probably seventy or eighty people in attendance on Sunday, and that's a hundred is about the most that we want to have right now. But every single Spirit and Truth Sanctuary member raised their hand. I was so proud that we all voted. And so we're glad you're here tonight, and we are, as always, an inclusive community. We know that God is bigger than religion. We also know that change is the only constant in the universe. We all change, but we change at our own pace and in our own space. If this is your first time, this may be the first time you're hearing this. Religion tells you what to think, but spirituality teaches you how to think. And so tonight, we have not come to teach you anything, but to remove the obstacles that keep you from seeing what you already know. We have been in the thought progression and the idea of not putting labels on experiences, both good or bad, which is the first metaphor that we get in Genesis, the Garden of Eden, not to eat of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. We are entertaining the thought, watch this, that we are not our thoughts. We are not even the thinker of our thoughts, but we are the observer of the thinker who is having the thoughts. We talked a little bit Sunday, the power is in the observer. The observer is where the transition, where the change happens, when you're able to step away from those thoughts, those opinions, those doctrines. You're able to see from the observing position, this is just a thought. It's not who I am. It's a thought I'm having. Just as I'm able to have this thought, I'm also able to change this thought. And so hopefully, not only do we change some thoughts tonight, but we ascend into higher ways of thinking and get rid of the lower rungs of consciousness that keep us mired in low self-esteem, things of that nature. We are becoming aware that the voice that comes from cultural conditioning, okay? Any type of collective cultural mindset, maybe that we inherited from family, religion, race, gender. All of these filters affect how we interpret present situations. And so once we're rid of all of those biased and prejudicial filters, we are able to hear specifically, clearly, translucently, genuinely, and purely from the Holy Spirit as he and she speaks to and through us. As always tonight, we're so glad you're here. We want you to comment. The teaching really is just a precursor. It's a catalyst to get us talking to each other. That's when the real learning begins. And so comment tonight if you have a question or something to add to the teaching. We certainly would love to hear your perspective. It doesn't have to be in total agreement with what I say or what Eckhart Tolle says. All comments are welcome because iron sharpens iron, just as one man, one woman sharpens another. The deep things in me call to the deep things in you. So come let us reason together tonight. Before we begin, let me remind you that you can download the notes tonight in your event description, and so you can follow right along with us. Without any further ado, happy Election Night or happy Election Week to everybody. And let's take a big, deep breath. Come on, let that anxiety go. Big, deep breath, let it go. We're gonna take a second breath because in election season, there's a whole lot of uneasiness and anxiety. Come on, one more big, deep breath. Let it go. As we take and give that breath, we declare tonight, we are not part of any specific election. We are not bound by government. Our lives are not run by politicians. Our lives are run by the divine creativity that rests within us. We separate ourselves tonight from any anxiety over outcomes or results of elections, and we open up our minds to understand that all things are working together for our good and according to God's purposes tonight. In this moment, we celebrate the beginner's mind. We know that faith comes by hearing and not by having heard. We have heard of all, but we know Spirit is saying tonight, and so in this childlike mind, we step into the kingdom ideal tonight, giving thanks for the truth that's flowing to and through us in the name and nature of Jesus the Christ we pray to. Oh, and say, amen, amen, and amen. This is our invitation of truth. If we have any liturgy at Spirit and Truth Sanctuary, it is our prayer of surrender. And in some way, this is a concentrated statement that if you just, if this were wrapped up in a towel and you began to squeeze this towel or exegy this prayer of surrender, all the answers of who Spirit and Truth Sanctuary really reside in our prayer of surrender. And so we'll ask you, if you will, tonight, read it with us and read it out loud. Come on, let's read our prayer of surrender. "Spirit of truth, carry me where you will. Bring to me what you will. Take from me what you will. Awaken in me what you will. The Christ man is around me. The Christ mind is in me. The Christ power flows through me, and the Christ mystery exists as me. I believe it. I perceive it, and now I receive it. I am surrendered. Amen, and so it is." All right, we've been talking or asking questions like, watch this, who are you without problems? That's a powerful question. And what if we, you, I, actually don't have any problems, but only situations that can be turned into problems by the way we approach them? Interesting question that we've been asking ourselves tonight. And so when we wake up to the divinely creative process in us, okay? Genesis, chapter one, God said, God saw, God surveyed. And if he didn't like it, he or she didn't like it, God shifted, okay? Supervised. And then, watch this, then God says, "I want to see how you act in this divine creative process." Nine times in the first couple of chapters of Genesis, we see God said, God saw, God surveyed, and then at least one time, God shifted because what he saw was not exactly what he wanted, okay? Then God says, "I'm gonna bring all of creation to Adam and see how Adam deals with his divine creativity." Adam, whatever you call the animals, the fields, whatever, I will call it that. So Adam said, then Adam saw, then Adam had to survey. And if Adam didn't like it, he had to shift it. And in that process, God was supervising. And so hopefully tonight, as we see the idea of problems, we don't see problems anymore. We see opportunities to infuse our divine creativity. If we don't like what we're seeing, at any point, we can recreate our lives, renew in me, God. All right, Spirit, recreate a pure mind in us tonight. And so with all that introduction, welcome to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary. We're so glad you're here tonight, and we look forward to the discussion. Tonight's subject is dissolving ordinary unconsciousness. And I think it's gonna be fairly relative and relevant to the election right now. And hopefully, we're able to walk through this together and deal with any uneasiness, any sense of anxiety that we're having over this, and hopefully, any sense of giving our power away. Our power does not come from politicians. Our power comes to the divine creativity that's resident within. All right, without any further ado, let's go ahead and jump in tonight. Divine, excuse me, dissolving ordinary unconsciousness. "The undercurrent of constant unease started long ago before the rise of Western industrial civilization, of course. But in Western civilization, which now covers almost the entire globe, including most of the East, it manifests in an unprecedentedly acute form." Excuse me. It was already there at the time of Jesus. Interesting. Jesus was under Roman occupation, and so Jesus historically walked the earth during the Roman Empire. Jesus was under Roman occupation, and so there was already some sense or semblance of Western civilization and culture, even in the Roman idea and ideals of things, okay? It was already there at the time of Jesus, and it was there six hundred years before that, watch this, at the time of Buddha. And even long before that with Sri Krishna, Mithras. Why, here's the question, "Why are you always anxious?" Jesus asked his disciples. "Can anxious thought add a single day to your life?" As we talked about a few weeks ago, that a cubit, King James thinks, says, "Can worry add one cubit to you?" Matthew, chapter six. A cubit really is supposedly used in measurement, but in context of what Jesus is saying, it's actually a span of time. "Can anxious thought add a single day to your life?" And the Buddha taught that the root of suffering is to be found in our constant wanting and craving. So applicable to tonight, as we're all watching the election results. As we are waiting for election results, why are we so anxious? I want us to be the observer just for a moment. You're not the thought about politics. You're not the mind having the thought about politics. You are the observer, observing the mind having thoughts about the politics. So here's a question that I want to ask you, especially from a Christian consciousness tonight. "Was Jesus ever at peace with the ruling governors or political climate of his day?" That's a pretty profound question, isn't it? Was Jesus ever completely at ease with the political or governmental climate of his day? Think about that for a minute. The Jewish or Hebrew people were literally under Roman. The Bible talks about occupation, or the zealots talk about occupation. But more accurately, it really was oppression. It wasn't occupation. The Jews were under oppression of taxation, the legality of everything, paying Caesar, all these things. They were an autonomous group with their own kind of board of judges, the Pharisees and the Sadducees. However, they didn't have complete autonomy because they had to go back to Caesar, Pilate, Herod, people involved in the Roman Empire, to get permission to do things. And so it wasn't just occupation. It really was oppression. And so here's the question that I posed to you tonight. If Jesus was never completely at ease under the governmental rulers of his time, do we need to be completely at ease politically in order to wake up to the kingdom that's within us? When Jesus said, "These things I've done, you will do in greater things," is that once a certain person is elected, or once the government is what I want it to be? No, there were no contingencies on that. Jesus was never truly, as a Jew, at peace in, under Roman oppression. He did spoke, manifested, taught what he taught, in spite of all these external influences and accidents. He was able, watch this, "in the midst of political unrest to manifest peace in the midst of the storm." Look how powerful that is. All right, keep coming. "Resistance to the now as a collective dysfunction is intrinsically connected to loss of awareness of being and forms the basis of our dehumanized industrial civilization." Freud, by the way, also recognized the existence of this undercurrent of unease and wrote about it in his book Civilization and Its Discontents. But he did not recognize the true root of the unease and failed to realize that freedom from it is possible. So, once we recognize unease, is it something we just surrender to? Or is it something that we can overcome? Can we overcome anxiety, worry, unease? Or as Bishop Pearson would say, dis, not disease, dis-ease, which really starts with the self and with our own soul. In other words, you can have information on what the problem is, but do you understand how to find rest in the midst of it? It doesn't mean that we don't understand there's not a very tense political climate right now. Our nation is divided down political lines. One aisle is mad at the other. I mean, I have never sensed in my forty-seven years, more divisive political season in my entire life. I've lived almost half a century now. Now, I've only been a voter since eighteen years old. But in those thirty years of being a voter, I've never sensed this level of political division. And so we're aware, I'm not in denial to what's happening in our nation, but my understanding of it and my acceptance of this is happening doesn't mean I can't find rest in the middle of it. Doesn't mean I can't find peace in the midst of it. Keep coming. "This collective dysfunction has created a very unhappy and extraordinarily violent civilization that has become a threat not only to itself, but also to all life on the planet." Whatever the outcome is of this election, will we have violence? Will we have a neighbor rising up against neighbor, brother against brother? I hope to God not. I hope we can live together as a democratic or as a democracy, but likely it might. But does that unrest have to get inside of us? We are in the world, but not of the world. It's very important to remember that. So how can we be free of this affliction? Watch this, make it conscious. Here's where the solution comes. This is so powerful. "Observe the many ways in which unease, discontent, intention arise within you through unnecessary judgment, resistance to what is, and denial of the now." So we just uncovered a pretty powerful truth. What is that? The awareness is the answer. Well, no, no, I need a specific answer, right or wrong, Democrat or Republican, I don't know. The awareness of the tension, the awareness of the unease, the awareness of the anxiety is the answer. The awareness of self, watch this, which lies in the observer, okay? Reminds us that the observer has the power over the mind, okay? Ego, as Tolle wrote about in his follow-up book to The Power of Now called A New Earth, which we did about fifteen years ago at Spirit and Truth Sanctuary. He says this, "The ego will never be defeated, but it can be kept in abeyance. It can be kept in check, held in check, when there is a constant conscious awareness of it." So the idea here is that we never completely defeat the ego, pride, self, low self-esteem, I am what others think about me, what I have, what I think. All those things are ego. I never fully defeat the ego, watch this, but I keep it in check. I hold it in abeyance as long as I'm consciously aware of it. And when it rises up within me, I don't become the thought, I become the awareness of the thought. And in that awareness, I'm able to keep the ego in check. Ooh, that's powerful right there. Anything unconscious dissolves when you shine the light of consciousness on it. I would say the light of awareness tonight on it. Once you know how to dissolve ordinary unconsciousness, the light of your presence will shine brightly, and it will be much easier to deal with deep unconsciousness whenever you feel its gravitational pull. Let me make everybody feel a little bit better tonight, okay? As your pastor, at least teacher, or at least sojourner in consciousness with you tonight. Last night, Brandy, my daughter Esther and me were watching the election results. And I felt a little sleepy, but I couldn't go to sleep because there was an unease about the election. My stomach was hurting. And all of a sudden, watch this, all of a sudden, I made a conscious decision to step out of the uneasiness. I became aware that what was outside of me, I was now allowing to affect my inner kingdom, okay? All of a sudden, I found myself, take a couple of deep breaths, I reminded myself of who God is. Watch this, I reminded myself of where my strength comes from, and before I knew it, I went to sleep. Before I knew it, I was dead asleep. And I woke up several times during the night and glanced at the television, but I did not sleep in anxiety. I did not sleep in unease, unrest. Where did my peace come from? It came from the awareness of the anxiety. I had to be willing to say, "Why am I so uneasy? Why am I so anxietous about this?" All of a sudden, I recognized it. I stepped out of the thought. I was not my mind. I became the observer. I reminded myself, I am made in the image and likeness of God and good. My strength comes from God, not from any politician or any governmental system. I took a couple of deep breaths. I was asleep before I knew it, and I thank God for that awareness. Doesn't mean I defeated the ego. It doesn't mean that when I woke up this morning, I wasn't interested again in the polls and the election results. What it meant was that I did not allow anxiety to overcome me. I didn't allow the emotion to become who I am. I stepped away from it. I observed it. I found peace. And this morning, I woke up and said, "I'm gonna find peace again." That is how, in the awareness, is how we defeat it. However, watch this, ordinary unconsciousness may not be easy to detect initially because it is so normal. Has anxiety, unease, unrest become a normal part of your life? And when you experience peace, you feel like you're in unfamiliar territory? Sometimes when you've lived in a lot of drama, peace is unfamiliar. Sometimes maybe it becomes even dysfunctionally unwanted, unwelcome. I had to learn, for years, the Park family lived in unrest, peace, a lack of peace, drama. One jumping out of the frying pan into the fire. I had to learn, about twelve or thirteen years ago, I made a conscious decision, I don't want to live in drama. I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill. I don't want to live in this unrest anymore. Watch this, "I choose and seek peace. I choose peace. I consciously choose peace for the rest of my life." I was about thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-five at the time. I said to myself, "I'm not gonna live in this the rest of my life. It is not normal. Even though it's become my norm, it is not what God wants for me. I choose to laugh, live, and love in peace." Doesn't mean I'm in denial of things that come my way. Doesn't mean I don't have some struggles. But I choose not for my normal state of consciousness to be anxietous and unrest. All right, so it says, "Make it a habit to monitor your mental, emotional state through self-observation." I literally bolded that and put it and underlined it in my notes. Make it a habit. That means it's something you do all the time to monitor, be the observer, be aware of your mental, emotional, that means what the mind thinks as it begins to affect your emotions. Last night, my mind affected my emotions. It affected my stomach. I felt physically a little sick last night. Watch this, "But through self-observation, I became aware of it. I let it go. I took some deep breaths, and I backed away from it." Okay, and as we would, as the old saints would say, "Let go and let God. Jesus will work it out if you let him." "Jesus will work it out if you let him. I gave it over to the Lord. He worked it out." Anybody, anybody old school tonight, listen to that? Okay. So let's do a little practice tonight. I want to do, I want to presence this truth tonight, right in the midst of us not knowing how this thing is gonna turn out, okay? I want everybody, if you want to, close your eyes just for a moment. Let's practice this idea. And in your own way, whether you say it silently to yourself or out loud, just say, "I am at ease in this moment." "I am at ease in this present moment." Wow. Now, watch this. Open your eyes and ask yourself, "Am I at ease in this moment?" Am I? Okay, it's a good question. Watch this, not to just ask one time, but as Eckhart Tolle says, to make it a habit. "Am I at ease in this moment?" Or you could ask this, "What's going on inside me at this moment?" What's going on going inside me? Why is it here? What's it here to do? Why do I feel this way? Am I projecting something from my past into this present moment? Watch this, "Am I projecting all of my future hopes on this moment?" So my past projections, my future predictions is not where I am. They may serve me in some small way. I am in this now moment. Watch this, "Be at least as interested in what goes on inside you as what happens outside." Yes, we're interested in the election tonight, but can we be just as interested in what's going on inside of us? If you get the inside right, the outside will fall into place. We're gonna get into some Jesus talk in a minute. Primarily, reality is within. Secondarily, reality is without. So as we start to talk about kingdom ideals, Jesus' kingdom ideals, about the inner kingdom, we say this, "The kingdom of God is within, okay? So if the kingdom of God is righteousness, peace, and joy in the Holy Spirit, then I can't seek it from an election." Whatever the result is, and it's good tonight that we don't know. It's so good that we don't know tonight, for sure. I can't seek it at the end of a result. I have to seek peace. Where does peace come from? Comes from within. Why? Because that's where the kingdom of God is within. Creation, creativity, peace, righteousness, joy, all that does not come from the tallying of votes. It comes from within me. As within, so without. As above, so below. Watch this. "Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." We say at Spirit and Truth Sanctuary, "Let your kingdom come in manifestation as it is in imagination." Ooh, chew on that for a minute. And so that is just a powerful kind of soliloquy of saying, "The outer world does not dictate my inner world." And I'm not speaking to you cheaply tonight. There've been some seasons in my life, in my lifetime, when my outer world was crumbling all around me. In order to maintain my sanity, I had to find inner peace, inner joy, inner love, inner truth, knowing that the good work God began in me, he would see it to the day of completion. Let me read this to you. This is Matthew twenty-five. It's not in your notes, so let me read it to you. Matthew twenty-five, verses, excuse me, twenty-three, verses twenty-five and twenty-six. Jesus says, "Woe to you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, for you cleanse the outside of the cup, but inside you are full of extortion and self-indulgence." Verse twenty-six, "Blind Pharisee," not physically, spiritually blind. "First cleanse the inside of the cup, that the outside may also be clean." What does that mean? Jesus is saying, "Why are you so concerned with what the outside looks like?" Now, religious minds would say, "That's right, the outside appearance, the length of your skirt, your makeup, your jewelry. A woman should not wear pants like a man." Oh, my goodness, all this nonsense that religion has tried to purvey in the name of God. Thank God, we graduated from that years ago, okay? But let's go to a higher or deeper level, okay? The outside of the cup may be an election. The outside of the cup may be your employment. The outside of the cup may be your present situation, your relationship, your financial situation. "Why are you more concerned with the external than the internal?" Jesus would say. "Why are you more concerned with the outer expression? Don't you realize that if you get the inner kingdom right, the outer kingdom will come in line?" Isn't that powerful? No matter what results of an election are, when you have that kind of power inside of you, you literally create a force field around you, that whatever comes my way, it cannot and will not affect my inner kingdom unless I allow it. Many great preachers have said for decades, maybe even centuries, "You can sail through any storm unless you allow the storm to get inside of you." A boat can make it through any storm. It's not the storm. It's not the outside of the storm. It's when you allow the storm to get inside of you that the boat starts having issues. All right. But don't answer these questions immediately. Direct your attention inward. Have a look inside yourself. What kinds of thoughts are in your mind, is your mind producing? What do you feel? Direct your attention into the body, as I did last night. Why is my body feeling weird because my mind is feeling weird? Is there any tension? Once you detect that there's a low level of unease, watch this, the background static, which we talked about last week, see in what way you are avoiding, resisting, or denying life by denying the now. There are many ways in which people unconsciously resist the present moment. I will give you a few examples. There are many ways in which people unconsciously resist the present moment, I will give you a few examples. With practice, uh your power of self-observation, of monitoring uh your interstate will become sharpened. Do you uh do you resent um doing what you are doing? Isn't that an interesting question? Do you resent what you're doing? It may be your job, it may uh or you may have agreed to do something and are doing it. The part of you resents and resists it. I underline this, are you carrying unspoken resentment toward a person close to you? Do you realize that the energy that you thus emanate is so harmful in its effects? That you are in fact contaminating yourself as well as those around you? Have a good look inside, is there even the slightest trace of resentment or unwillingness? If there is, watch this, don't judge it. Observe it on both the mental and the emotional levels. What thoughts uh is your mind, are your mind creating around this situation? Then look at the emotion, which is the body's reaction to those thoughts, isn't that amazing? Your emotions are the body's reaction to the to the thoughts. Feel the emotion, does it feel pleasant or unpleasant? Is it is it an energy you would actually choose to have inside you? Now listen to this question, do you even have a choice? Do you have a choice how you respond emotionally to the outside world? You have a choice whether you can separate yourself to be the observer, not the thoughts or the mind. Here's here's the an- the the basic answer, yes, you have a choice. You may be conditioned in a way that says you don't have a choice, but you do have a choice. You choo- we choose how we react to the external world. Maybe uh you are being taken advantage of, maybe the activity you're engaged in uh is tedious. Maybe so uh someone close to you is dishonest, irritating or unconscious. Uh watch this, but all that is irrelevant. Whether your thoughts and emotions about this are justified or not, makes no difference. In other words, don't judge it, just see you. Don't judge situations, just see your reaction to the situation. The fact is that you are resisting what is, you're making the present moment into an enemy. You are creating unhappiness, conflict between the inner and the outer. Your unhappiness is polluting your own inner being and those around you, as well as the collective human psyche of which you are a part. Woo, that's so good. The individual consciousness does affect the collective consciousness, I underlined this next sentence, I underlined the whole thing, and it's a lo- it's a long sentence. Either stop doing what you are doing, speak to the person concerned and express fully what you feel. Or drop the negativity that your mind has created around the situation and that serves no purpose whatsoever. Except to strengthen a false sense of self. My goodness, can I can I just summarize that for you? What does that mean? If you are constantly aware of external influences that are you're allowing to affect your inner kingdom. At some point, if you carry a higher vibration, you have to allow that vibration to either vibrate you away from the situation, okay, and sometimes that's family, friends, career, church, could be many things. Or you have to have such a powerful vibration that it begins to affect other people's vibr- vibratory e- emotional responses. What does that mean? If I if my vibration can't change yours, then I need to vibrate away from it. And that's okay, that doesn't mean you're being cold or heartless, doesn't mean you're being neglectful of people that you have have some level of history with. It just means at some point you have to take over the reins of creating the life that you want. That sometimes means separation from others, in that separation, sometimes there is the inviting of of new of new vibration into your life. It's okay. I I learned years ago, I was speaking at a church in Connecticut. And uh was the largest charismatic church in the entire state. And when I finished speaking, uh the pastor who I who I saw at that time of my life as a mentor, as a spiritual guide, really is a kind of a spiritual father, one of my spiritual father figures. He said to me, Dee, I wanna have you come back, I want you to speak at our youth conference, I want you to come back and speak on our anniversary. Of course, I'd love to come. He said, but I want you to understand something, that in your lifetime, you will only get five friends. And I said, what in the world do you mean by that, I have at least five close family members, much less friends. He said, just keep living and see what I say. You only get five friends your entire life. And what he meant by that was, people that from the beginning of your journey to the end of your journey continue to resonate with you on the same vibration as spirit of God takes you from glory to glory. As your vibration begins to change, as the journey takes you into higher and better truths, okay? Sometimes people are with you for a season, but as you begin to venture into different vibratory levels. You find that separation and segregation begins to happen. I've learned in my journey, when people come into my life, I welcome them, when people walk out of my life, I bless them as they go. I don't hold grudges, I try not to, I have I have certainly in my life and I and I try to be the aware, the awareness of uh as the observer of the grudges when they come. But I try to say, hey, let all that go, clear out your vibrant vibratory vessel, what does that mean? As as easily as people are attracted to me, sometimes they go their way and end their season. I bless them as they come, I release and bless them as they go. That's my way of saying to God, no one person is the source of my strength, God, you are the source of my strength. And as I continue to journey, I will remember that I don't get a whole lot of lifelong friends, I get a few. But that's okay, because I am not here, watch this, specifically just to make friends. I am here to unfold as a divine creature, as a divine creation. I'm not here to continue to try to maintain friendships that should have ended years ago, we're not, we haven't been on the same level in two decades. Why are you still trying to maintain that? When you let it go, you'll find eventually your peace will come back to you, real real quick biblical lesson. In the story of Jonah, Jonah is in disobedience to God, he's on a ship headed toward Tarshish, he's supposed to be going to Nineveh. A great storm arises, the ship is going down. Whole ship, Jonah, all the sailors, all the stuff they're carrying, everything's going down. Jonah says, hey guys, I'm the reason for the problem on the ship, put me off the ship and everything will be good, the sailors say, no, 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 Jonah. We're not gonna throw you off the ship. And so he continues to convince them, finally, he convinces them, and watch this. They throw Jonah off the ship. Immediately the storm ceases. Now watch this, God has prepared transportation from Jonah. Out of his disobedience, back to Nineveh where he was called. So not only did Jonah survive, but the ship survived and got to Tarshish. Sometimes in our obligatory carrying of people on our ship that we know we're not supposed to be going the same direction, our mindsets have changed decades ago. Our ship continues to be in a storm. And until you get rid of that negative vibration, or at least that other vibration. Your ship isn't gonna make it, and watch this, and the person that's not supposed to be on your ship is not gonna make it, everybody's going down. When you allow the vibration to both bring to you and take away from you things that are not supposed to be part of your life. Not only will your ship make it, but the people that aren't supposed to be on your ship find their vibration with God, the body is made whole by what every joint supplies, but they are not all the same joint. I've learned that sometimes the hard way is spirit and true sanctuary. Everybody's not supposed to be on your ship, and that's okay. God is God is working all those things together for your good. Let's keep coming. Negativity is never uh the optimum way of dealing with any situation, in fact. In most cases, it keeps you stuck, stuck in it, blocking real change, anything that is done with negative energy will become contaminated by it, and in time will give rise to more pain, more unhappiness. Furthermore, any negative interstate is contagious. Unhappiness spreads more easily than a physical disease. Through the law of resonance, it triggers and feeds latent negativity in others. Unless they are immune, what does that mean? Unless they are highly conscious. So, let's not be the others, let's be the highly conscious ones. That when negativity comes our way, anxiety, unrest, unease, dis-ease. We become immune, not by in not by denial of it. By the by the conscious awareness um and observation of it, but knowing, I'm not the unease, I'm not the anxiety. I am the observer of all these things, I dictate my inner kingdom. Listen to this last little piece, so so good right here. Are you polluting the world? My daughter's listening to me teach it tonight, thinking about environmentalism. Are you polluting the world or cleaning up the mess? Are you responsible for your inner space? Nobody else is. You are also responsible for your contribution to the planet, as within, so without. If humans clear inner pollution, they will also cease to create outer pollution. We are uh out of town for a few days, and we're staying in a hotel where there's a lot of recycling bins. And it really makes my daughter happy, it makes me happy, I'm I'm an environmentalist, I believe we we're we're called to care for the earth, but watch this. Until I can be environmentally clean on the inside of me. Until I begin to respect myself, love myself, I can't respect my environment. Until I love myself, until I love myself as a white, straight American, male southerner. Until I can love me, I can't love someone of a different color, culture, religion, sexual orientation. I've got to love the inside of me first. I've got to get comfortable in my skin before I can be comfortable with you and your skin, that's just how it works. I until the my inner environment is at peace and at rest. I can't recycle, I can't care for the earth and the water and the air and the animals. All of it is an in- it's an inside job first. Then out of that inward, out of that inward peace, then I begin to man- my imagination begins to become manifestation. That's how it all works, and so, I hope to God this this teaching has brought some peace to you tonight as we're all glued to our televisions watching election results, and I hope it's also um been a catalyst for some comments tonight.
Yes, many. So I'll kinda try to filter here, cause there's a lot this evening. Uh Richard commented early, thank you pastor, we all need to pause, let go and let God work all things out regarding any and all anxiety that we may be experiencing regarding election results.
So beautiful, and let let me piggyback on that, Richard. It doesn't mean I don't care. My daughter and I talk about politics a lot, my wife, we all we all kinda sit around and talk about politics. And um I was saying to her, I said, baby girl, it's not that I don't care. I I've been a voter in a specific party since I was eighteen years old, my parents were part of civil rights, we marched. We've marched for civil rights, we've, my parents, my mother was shot at during civil rights, you know, when it was unpopular for white people to be involved. I've been a part of the the struggle for e- the equality of humanity for a long time. It it at very least in my voice, you know, and and in the modeling of an inclusive community. It doesn't mean I don't care, it just means I won't give my power away to it. I won't give my peace away to it, I will not give my joy, my rest, I will not allow government to be the source of my strength. My help and my strength comes from God, and so, I'm so glad you said that tonight, Richard, this is this is for all of us, including me tonight.
So I think naturally there are a lot of comments on, you know, just the feeling of the unease. And Miss Bobby commented on something that I thought would take us back a couple of teachings ago, that I just really um connected with. She said, it's hard to be at rest when you are focusing on what's in front of you. You have to just make up your mind to just breathe and step outside of yourself and find peace in the midst of the storm. Which reminded me of the teaching of uh learning to stay in the now moment and not focusing on the past. There was a particular teaching I wish I could recall, and it was so powerful, but and also the future of what might be, and that's where we are, is but we are so focused on what is going to happen. What we we're in this worry state, this worrying anxiety that we are all in. And I thought that was really powerful, that we're we're focused so much on what's in front of you.
So let me um let me speak a mystery to that, if that's okay, I know that we, as spirit and truth, we understand the milk of the word, the meat of the word. And a few of us, a- as we know, script, Jesus says, everybody can't get mysteries, it's only given to a few of you, but I know that Miss Bobby, Richard, those who are here connecting every week. We understand some mysteries that everybody else doesn't get to be a part of, we don't say that pridefully, we say it humbly, thank you, Holy Spirit, for allowing us to surrender. To be able to enter into mysteries, and so, one of the mysteries that Jesus speaks to us as as Bobby was saying about the things in front of us, was the idea of binding and loosing. And so, most of my life, I heard that taught really out of context. That binding and loosing meant we can bind the devil and we can loose blessings. And there's nothing wrong with that, that I think that's a powerful way to think in life that I love it, that the devil has no power over us, we can loose blessings in our life, it's not about favor or any mood swings of God. Powerful, there's nothing wrong with it, however, that's not the context. Binding and loosing is an ancient Hebrew custom that the that the Pharisees, the scribes used when talking about mysteries. They would, i- in the writing of the Torah or the Pentateuch, the first five books of Moses. They believed this is the word of God, but they understood that in in of in and of itself. This isn't enough explanation. And so the rabbis would sit down and say, what did what did Moses mean by that? What did God mean when he said to Moses about this or that? And so they had to add what they called the Mishna and the Talmud. And all these different commentaries that became in the Hebrew custom scripture. It became the the rabbi's discussion over it, became scripture, well, when they were in that in those discussions, they called it binding and loosing. What does that mean? They would take a mystery off the shelf. What did Moses mean by that? They would discuss the mystery, and there may have been ten or twelve rabbis there, that was what they called a quorum. If there was ten ten rabbis, that meant there were enough to to bind and loose. They would remove, and all of them didn't agree. They would come out from different theological perspectives and what they understood of God. And at the end of it, watch this, they would loose that mystery, and then in the anxietist moment of not understanding all of it, watch this. They would bind the mystery together together again, and then they would they would uh mentally, emotionally uh metaphysically, put that mystery back on the shelf. They took it off, they loosed it, then they bound it. What I pray for us in in the the next few days, as spirit and true sanctuary is that we're able to loose the mystery of what's happening in this election, what's what is the trajectory of our nation? How does this, how do we how do we involve this at spirit and true sanctuary as an inclusive community? How do you go, watch this, and I'm I'm trying to speak neutrally. How do you go from the the extreme of Barack Obama to Donald Trump? There couldn't be more polarity. Barack Obama and Donald Trump, there could not be a wider chasm between it. What's the point of all this? Let's take that off the shelf, let's discuss it. What is happening right now, how is all this working together for our good? What does God want us to see right now, what are we? We don't wanna be in denial, we wanna see clearly what's happening in our nation, but at the end of the night, when we put our head on that pillow. Bind that mystery back to back again, put it on the shelf, as Jesus said, sufficient for the day is its own trouble. Don't project into tomorrow, don't live in yesterday, but as Bobby said, live in this now moment, in this now present moment. It's all good, it's all God.
So going back to the Jonah example, a lot of comments there just about, you know, that everyone is not supposed to be on your ship. Jen commented in, that's okay, um several others as well, and then Brittany asked, how do you begin the work of letting go of others that have served their season? It is challenging to let go of the familiar.
The the problem with letting go, Brittany, is that you share history together, think about that. When you share history with someone, there's a level of comfortability, there is a level of nostalgia. Wh- when I get together with people that I knew in my teenage years, in my twenties, we rehearse stories, we laugh. There are coaches, there are friends, there are teammates, there are I mean, I could just go down a litany of people that were involved, neighbors, people that lived in my neighborhood. It doesn't mean that when we get together, man, we laugh, we pick up right where we left off. But when we begin to talk about where are you right now, we are not at the same place. Our vi- our vibratory levels are not in the same space. And so it doesn't And so it doesn't mean you can't celebrate the past. You should go to high school reunions, family reunions, enjoy it. But somewhere along that, watch this, as as the observer, you will find we share some beautiful past together, but we don't share a present. My sister was remarking to me the other day that uh politically, when she tries to engage people from her high, from her high school, which if I graduated, I know what that means, she graduated about nineteen eighty-three, that's wow, thirty-four, thirty-five years ago, somewhere in there or or more, thirty-seven years ago. That's a long time for people to say, I'm not eighteen anymore. I'm forty-seven, I'm fifty-five, I I'm not where I used to be. It doesn't mean we can't enjoy the memory of the past together, but we're not in the now season together. And if you try to force that, it becomes obligation. You're holding on to something that should have been released a long time ago and so. When that vessel, Brittany, gets clogged up with things like obligation, guilt, uh feeling like you have to do something, I don't care if it's, if it's the tithe, the offering, friendships, family, when that vessel gets clogged up with things like obligation, I have to, because God said, or because we share history together. Your vessel of create, the creative conduit that runs through you gets clogged up. And God cannot, this universe spirit, whatever you wanna say, cannot manifest all the beauty of your now season because it's clogged up with a lower vibration like obligation. And so it may seem weird, it may seem a little heartless at times, but that really is not what's happening. When you begin to wake up to a new vibration, there will, some natural separations will be begin to happen and at some point you have to surrender to it.
So going back to focusing on what's or on yourself, um Cali wrote, it's always an inside job we deal with. And then Laverne con- commented, I am at ease at this moment. There are issues I'm working on to live a peaceful and productive life. Let this election handle itself.
That's kinda how Jesus said sufficient for the day is its own trouble, you know, yeah. These are things, watch this, that the Gentiles seek after. And and that's really a derogatory term. I wish I could just rewrite the whole New Testament, but Gentile in the New Testament just meant anybody who wasn't Jewish, anybody who wasn't born of Israeli descent, which is very pro- problematic. It's very racist and tribalistic, culturally driven. I don't even like. Even when 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 King James says Jesus was arguing with the Jews. He wasn't, he wasn't at odds with all Jews. Jesus was a Jew, Paul was a Jew, his disciples were Jews. It was a very specific sect of the Jews. It's like saying, all white people are bad, all black people are this way. I hate gay people because they're all this way. That's so inaccurate. Individuals can be a certain way, but usually an entire race of people is never a certain way. However, um there is some truth of what Jesus is saying is that Gentiles in some level of of weird context, people who don't get kingdom teaching, people who don't understand the now, they seek after these things. They project into the future, they're caught in the past. But as Kelly said, as an inside job, I have to re- remain present in the now.
So on that note, Reverend David Michael,
David Michael just went through some surgeries and we're so glad that you're, that you're healthy and we're speaking wellness to you.
So I think you'll love this. He actually um quoted Gospel of Thomas scripture this evening. And it says, rather the kingdom is inside of you and it is outside of you. When you come to know yourselves, then you will be, become known and you will realize that it is you who are the sons and daughters of a living mother father. But if you will not know yourselves, you dwell in poverty and it is you who are that poverty. But about knowing yourself, I thought that was really great.
Uh I'm I'm certainly not an expert. Um I've studied the synoptic gospels and the gospel of John my whole life, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John. I have studied some in the Gospel of Thomas. What I have studied, I absolutely love it. Because as David Michael said, the Gospel of Thomas is a very esoteric, very metaphysical book that begins to explain to us where Jesus hints at us. Jesus throws out some little commercials, some little uh teasers, some little sound bites, the kingdom of God is within. The Gospel of Thomas deals with that e- extensively. And so uh as the Gospel of Thomas points to us, if we don't, if we don't, if we're not understanding of the inner kingdom, the outer kingdom will reflect poverty, lack, unease, dis-ease, anxiety. And so whether whether King James and the Council of Nicaea canonize the Gospel of Thomas, it's part of my canon. It's part of what I read, because as we know, we find truth wherever it presents itself, not because a man says this is or isn't true. But uh the Gospel of Thomas, I think my sister referred to it maybe in her last, maybe Sunday morning, I think she may have referred to it. Speaking of, that the kingdom of God is not in church buildings. The kingdom of God is all around us and in us. As the Gospel of Thomas says, break a stick, break a twig, and I am there. Where two are there gathered, not just in my name, but in my nature, in my consciousness, I am there and so. Very powerful teaching, Brother David, thank you.
So I think a note to end on this evening, Tamara wrote in, the resistance feeds the anxiety. Acknowledge and observe, yet stay in peace. And she wrote a little later, I consciously choose peace. And several other folks have commented this evening about the conscious choice that we have. So I thought that was really great. We all seem to be on the same wavelength about consciously choosing peace. So there was a quote that we posted yesterday that said, uh either, uh there there's no way to peace, peace is the way.
Peace is the way. Thank you, Tamara, very, very powerful. Consciously, choose peace, if I give you some scripture, and this isn't even new, this is Old Testament. Seek peace and pursue it. Look at the ac- action of those verbs. Seek it, pursue it. In the Hebrew, pursue means to run after it. Run after peace. That means it may not always just fall in your lap. Peace is something that has to be pursued. And so uh we consciously, Tamara, choose peace in the midst of external anxiety. And so I I certainly wouldn't tell anybody to ever, um you know, t- turn off the news or anything of that nature. Um watch the news. We we need to be aware of what's going on around us. We need to not, we need to not live in denial. But as as the as the saying goes, don't allow the storm to get inside of you. And for God's sake, watch this, don't give your power away the next couple of days. Whether you're celebrating, okay, the victory that that you wanted, or whether you're lamenting, you know, my candidate didn't win. Whatever that is, it's in the observance is where the power is. You're gonna feel it, we're gonna feel anxiety. Don't resist it. As Tamara said, don't resist the anxiety, recognize it's there. Then ask the question as the observer, why is this here? It's okay to feel this way, it's okay to be upset, it's okay to be disappointed. You can't win every game that you play. Nobody wins a hundred percent of the time. However, in the awareness of it, in the observance of it, is where you say, okay, I'm not this anxiety. It's okay to feel it, but this is not who I am. And so I don't know if we were gonna give some some shouts out tonight. We wanna give some shouts out tonight to Esther folks, to Emma, Sheila, Linda, excuse me, Jen, uh Ben and Vicky, Myrna, Glimma, Randy, Dr. Elijah, Doreen, Elaine, yay. Miss Rosaline, I saw Miss Rosaline at church Sunday, yeah, sitting in the balcony with her hat on, beautiful. Lenora, uh Gloria, Callie, Hughget, Michelle, Pastor Dawn, Bobby, uh Dr. Sharonda, Patricia, Anita, Pastor Gloria Ann Howard, Cheryl, Pastor Helen, Alita, Annette, Crystal, Laverne, uh Tamara, Justina, hey, Miss Justina, Susan, uh Carolyn, Richard, Pastor Cassius. By the way, Pastor Cassius is one of my five lifelong friends. He's one of my five. We grew up on the same street, been going to the same church and the same mindset. We're gonna be that way for the rest of our lives. I know in Cassius Turner, he is one of my five that I get for the rest of my life. I better be one of yours, Cassius. Cassius Neil Turner. Uh Terry, Regina, Alma, Brittany, Reverend David Michael, Pastor Curtis and Miss Esther, wonderful. And Fred and Mary, thank you guys so much for being with us tonight. And uh before we dismiss, let's read our affirmation together. And I wanna give you an exciting announcement for Sunday before we dismiss. Got a text today from Bishop Carlton Demetrius Pearson. Carly Moses from from Tulsa, Oklahoma, from San Diego, California. He will be staying at my house this Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and he will be our guest preacher this Sunday at Spirit and True Sanctuary. I'm so excited. That Bishop Pearson will be staying with me and then spe- speaking for us on Sunday morning. And uh tell all your friends, tune in with us uh via live stream, check him out. And Carlton always has such a powerful word for us. He is the father of the inclusive movement. I tell him all the time, I'm, we're the mothership. We're the model of what you're preaching, but you're the father of this movement. And so we're glad to have the father, our mentor uh of inclusion with us this Sunday, Bishop Carlton Pearson. Uh with that, let's read our affirmation together. Come on, let's read together. I am not my thoughts, I am not the thinker of my thoughts. I am the observer witnessing the thinker thinking the thoughts. Tonight, I am not the voice in my head or any limitation of an inherited collective cultural conditioning, religious indoctrination, or even my past experiences. This week, come on, I will mind my mind, free my mind, be free of my mind and surrender to practice no mind, amen. So it is, we're so glad you joined us tonight. Go in peace, may God bless you. We'll see you again Sunday morning.